Hello. Uh, right now, I'm studying for my midterm exam for University Physics 2. And I just thought I'd kind of make a review video as I study. Helps me to focus and maybe someone else will find it useful, so. This, uh, our exam covered four chapters. Um, and let's see, what were they about? It covered a chapter about Coulomb's law and point charges. Um. It covered a chapter about electric fields. It covered a chapter about electric potential and potential energy. And it covered a chapter about, um, capacitors. I think that's everything. Let's see. Capacitors. Yeah, more or less, that's everything, the main headings, so. Pretty much, I'm just gonna go through my formula sheets here, which are, so there's much less formulas that are really like basic formulas. And then, uh, the book that I have breaks them down into other formulas that you're likely to use during solving the problem sets. Although technically, they're just derived from the earlier formulas, so you wouldn't need to have the derived versions, but it's nice to, to have them and to see them to be able to remember them. I mean, they're all things that could be derived relatively easily by someone. But I think when you're a beginner and you have all these formulas floating through your head, it can be pretty hard to come up with the derivation that you need, so. First, let's look at point charges. Um, the main formula here is Coulomb's law. And there's a couple ways to write it, so we have force equals k times the magnitude of Q1 times the magnitude of Q2 over top of r squared. And here, I did not make the force a vector. So this is the, the electric force. And you'll notice probably that this parallels very heavily with the universal force of gravitation, which I think is force, obviously, your force of gravity equals big G times m1 times m2 over top of r squared. So here, charge and mass are, uh, performing the same function in, in the equation. And then, uh, k and g are both constants, so they're performing the same function in the equation. Kind of fascinating, and it makes it a little easier to remember both. Alright, so this is one, one way to do it. And the idea here is, let's say we have two charges. So we have a positive charge, it could be positive or negative, I'll just make it negative. Negative. This is Q1, this is Q2. We need r, which is gonna be the distance between the charges, technically, it's from the center of the charge to the center of the charge, but usually with charges, you're dealing with such small sizes that it doesn't matter, but technically it is. And, uh, k is a constant, so if you have these values and you plug in these values, you'll get a value for the force. Well, force is a vector, so you're technically just getting the magnitude of the force at this point. If you want to know the direction of the force from this equation, then you need to, um, you know, graphically deduce what that is. The other equation is basically the same, but what you have is force as a magnitude. Well, actually, you know what, there's, there's three main ways to write it, so let's do it the second way. The second way is force equals k Q1 Q2 over r squared. And ta- I think technically, you could write a vector sign here, I'm not really sure which is more mathematically proper, but what happens here is you keep the signs. So in this one, I have Q1 is negative and Q2 is positive. But the end result will be positive because we did the magnitudes. In fact, the end result will always be positive because we're doing the magnitude of Q1, the magnitude of Q2, and we're taking r and squaring it, and k is a positive constant, so this is always positive. Now, in this one, um, we can get a positive or a negative value for F. So what happens is if Q1 and, let me draw a couple more here, so this is positive and negative. Let's do positive. Positive and negative, negative. So if, uh, Q1 and Q2 are both positive, the force is going to be positive. And what this, what the positive value of the force is telling us from this formula is actually that it's telling us that the forces point away from each other. And you'll notice, eh, if both Q1 and Q2 are negative, force is still positive. Telling you that the forces point away from one another. Now, if Q1 or Q2, if one is negative and one is positive, then they point towards each other and the value of F will be negative. So in this case, the charge on F is telling you whether the charges, it's not telling you a direction as in like a, you know, positive x direction, positive y direction, negative x direction, negative y direction, it's telling you a direction as in, uh, do the charge, do the forces point away from each other or towards each other? That's that one. And let me delete this again. Uh, but you'll notice that they're all really technically the same formula, it's just a slightly different way to write it on how you want to apply the formula. So the base way to memorize it could either be considered this way or this way. Another way to write it that comes in handy in certain circumstances is force as a vector equals k Q1 Q2 over r squared times r hat. So what this is telling you is we want to consider force as a vector and the r hat is the direction of r. Um, it's the unit vector direction of r. And so what that would mean, where that might come into play eh, is if you, if you need to know the direction of the electric force and it's, so here in this setup, if, if, if I had, uh, the y-axis vertical and the x-axis horizontal, as you can see, r hat really doesn't matter whether you keep it in or leave it out because we're floating along the x-direction. So you can just know that whatever the force is only gonna be in either x positive or x negative. But if this is let's just put one of our charges here. We'll make them both positive this time. Let's put one of our charges here. And let's say we want to be thinking about the charge here. The force on Q2. So eh, in the end, we know our result is going to look like this. This one right here being the one on, the force on Q2. And so the direction of r is this angle right here, this is, uh, the direction of r. So. Yeah, so if we want our final answer to, um, actually be a vector that points in the proper direction and has the proper magnitude, then we would use a formula like this, where we consider, we'd be sure to consider the, the unit vector direction of r. And this also can come in handy if you have a formula that is going to involve you applying calculus where, um, like, so in later examples, you may have a, let me delete some of this again. Alright, so maybe you have the situation where you have this thing right here. And let's say it's a semicircle shape. And let's say you have a point right here, that's some kind of charge. And then this out here, so let's say this is charge 1. And this is charge 2. Charge 2 is this whole thing. So the end result of the force on this charge will be the sum of all of the other charges, which I didn't actually go over yet, so let's say we have this charge here, positive. And let's say we have some charges here, negative, positive, and negative. So Coulomb's law can be applied to each of these charges. And let's say this is the charge that we're actually concerned with, finding the force on this charge. So it's going to be the sum of all of these charges. Vector sum, because these are, these are vectors at this point, they're, you, you really can't use either of these two formulas directly because the, um, forces are pointing in different directions, so you have to be sure to consider the component of the force that's traveling in the same direction. So we have a negative and a positive, so this one's going to be pulling like this. We have a positive, a positive, so this one's gonna be pushing out this way. And we have a negative and a positive, so this one's gonna be pushing this way. So depending on what values you have and what these exact angles are, when you sum these, so like, just looking at this, I can tell that it's quite possible that the sum here is zero, um, depending on the values we're given, but may, you know, maybe it's not, um. But what's gonna happen is these, uh, two pulls from the two negative charges are gonna kind of cancel this one and the positive. So if these angles were even, um, it's, it looks kind of like, so, so let's say we break this one down into uh, y-direction and x-direction. And let's say we break the southern one down into, whoops, that's, that's real crooked, y-direction and x-direction. So what we can see then, the final result of, we're gonna have to add the two y-values together. Um, if these are, the, if these are set up in a certain way, it's possible that these are gonna directly cancel out because they're pointing in opposite directions. If they don't cancel out, you might have one, uh, that points a little bit, it might point, one of them's, th- there might be a net force either up or a net force down, or maybe the two cancel out exactly. But these two pointing to the left, they both have to add together, so it's gonna be a bigger force than what they are individually. And you can tell that, you know, just from my drawing here, it's quite possible that the force pointing to the left and the force pointing to the right also cancel out, so that the net force is zero. Or it's possible that either the force pointing to the left or the force pointing to the right is slightly bigger, so you have a net force pointing maybe to the left and pointing to the right. So your final answer will be a vector, either it will be zero or maybe, huh, let's use red, this is gonna be the final answer. The final answer might be pointing directly right. It might be pointing directly left. Um. It might be pointing up, it might be pointing down, or it might be pointing any combination of these two. Of the, oh, of these four. You know that it will be, the final will be smaller than any of these individual, because you have some, some things canceling out with one another, but you don't actually know which direction it's pointing until you're given the values and the angles. So anyway, there's, there's, uh, Coulomb's law and, uh, vectors and vectors as point charges. Let's say we have a continuous charge, now you're gonna wanna use calculus, um, because this is a continuous linear charge that's, uh, bent into a semicircle shape. And this is a, a point, and so use a different color, yellow. So what's gonna happen is, let's say that we have this little spot here. It's, uh, so if we're considering this spot, this is r. And, um, I didn't say, let's say they're opposite charges, so the force will be pointing away. So this then would be the resultant force vector. And what you might notice is, if you can use your imagination, pretend this really is a semicircle and that this Q is in the center of what would be the full circle, then for this point here, there should be a mirrored point on the other end that has r going this way and results in the same magnitude, because the magnitudes will always be the same here, because it's, the charges are the same between the two, it's just the direction's gonna change. What you see from this is, uh, if we break down this into its, uh, component vectors, we're gonna have a y-direction and an x-direction, and for the other one, we'll have a y-direction and an x-direction, and in this case, because the angles are the same, because they're on mirror, they're mirror one another, and because the charges are the same, by the magnitudes of the charges are the same, then we know that these are actually gonna cancel. And the resultant vector will just be these two added together. And as you move around this circle, every single point's gonna do that, and you're just gonna continuously make this a little bigger and a little bigger and a little bigger. So what we do then is see if, this is where I'm, I might end up making a mistake, because these are kind of hard to set up. But. So let's say we have this formula here, we're using force as a vector equals k Q1 Q2 over r squared times r hat. So r hat in this case is gonna be taking the x-component of every vector. Because we're only concerned with the x-component. So r hat here is actually cosine theta, because, uh, wait, is that what I want? Yes, cosine theta, so that as we, so the way that we're gonna conceptualize this is I made this kind of messy, so maybe I'll delete some of this here. Alright. I'll just draw these again. Okay, so. Uh, let me use orange. So as we, let's, let's take some point, let's take this one here, because I already drew it. So we're gonna take this little slab and we'll call this, um, dQ. So this is gonna represent charge 2, and it's gonna be dQ. Charge 1, I'm gonna, uh, just call Q, so that I don't have to write the subscript. So this charge 1 is represented by Q. Uh, this is represented by dQ. So for dQ, there's an associated dr, which is this right here, dr. And what we wanna do is plug in dQ and dr into the formula, and then sum do that for every possible dQ and sum all of the dQs together as we move around. Okay? So we'll be moving around according to theta. Trying to think if that's right, I don't remember theta coming into play honestly, but let's see what happens. So we have, uh, so we're gonna have force equals, k is a constant, Q, Q1 here does not change as we're doing this process, so it can come out as something that doesn't change. And we're gonna deal with let's say I think it's gonna be the integral um, from something to something, uh, dQ over dr squared uh, times r hat, which I think we're gonna wanna plug in cosine of theta. So let me do that now, and I might have to change that later if I was mistaken, cosine theta. Now, so. Oh, you know what, actually, I did, I did see, I do see something that's mistaken already. So this dr is actually r, because it's a, uh, semicircle, so yes, it is dr, but dr is always r actually, so it, it's not, it's not dr, that was incorrect, it's r. Okay, so we have yeah, because, so this r is always the same as we move around, because it's a semicircle. Um. What else am I missing? So I can either turn this theta into terms of r or I can turn this r into terms of theta. And actually, I believe you can do both mathematically. Um, because there's a formula for the length of a of a secant line based on theta. Uh, I don't remember, I know it's really simple, but I don't remember it 100% off the top of my head. I wanna say it's something like, it's, involves r, so maybe it's like r times theta equals the length of the secant line. But I'm not 100%, so I'm not gonna use that one. Um. See what I can do, I can do, I believe I can turn theta into terms of r, let me think about that for a second, so. Hmm. If I try to turn theta into terms of r. Um. I think I'm gonna have to use the same formula, to be honest. Let me, let me just look it up real quick, I don't remember the formula for a secret, secant line. Just take me a second. Oops. No, that's, it's not called a secant line, that's what I have wrong, it's called a arc, arc length. Is that right, arc length? Yeah, there we go, arc length equals r times theta, okay, so I was right. Testine, alright, so we have arc length equals r times theta. So, um, so actually, I think, and then too, normally, when you, when this problem is given as an example problem, you're gonna have, maybe big Q can represent the that's what we want, big Q could represent the total charge. So then dl instead of dQ could represent this tiny little length here of this, uh, thing. And the charge dQ equals, should be the charge density times dl. So either you might be given a charge density, or you might be given the total charge and the length. And charge density should equal Q divided by L. Yeah. So this is the charge density, um, this is the total charge of the line. So now we have dQ in terms of dl, so I'm gonna write it that way. And the charge density, we're assuming the even distribution of charge density, so it does not change as you, as you float around this thing. So I can pull that out of the integral. So we have k Q lambda, the integral of cosine theta over r squared dl. Now, uh, we need to get both of these in terms of L. Both theta and r, so. Um. Let's think for a second, so theta equals the secant line over r. Um. And in this case, the length of the secant line here is actually L, that's what I'm calling L. So I should be able to say this is L over r. Um, hopefully that's correct, I know that this isn't the way it was solved in the book, so I may have a mistake in here, but k Q lambda integral of cosine of L over r. And, yeah, and I can actually keep these Rs because except now that looks, I don't know exactly. Yeah, that doesn't look quite like it's supposed to, I think they did something else. Anyway, you get the idea. Long story short, this isn't exactly the best way to simplify this. I don't know if I have written down the best way to simplify it. I didn't write it down. But the main point is, so in this example, right here, you would need to use the vector equation, and this r hat is gonna come into play as you sum up all of the individual, uh, force vectors. Or, or as you integrate over the individual force vectors. So that's almost everything, um, what else was covered? There's some constants that are covered, so I didn't mention what k is, k equals 8.99 times 10 to the ninth. And I always remember the units by memorizing this formula, so that, it has to cancel out, so that you have Newtons left over, so you're gonna have Newtons on the top. To cancel out with the bottom, r, you're gonna have to have meter squared on the top to cancel with the meter squared on the bottom. And to cancel with the top, this is gonna become charge squared, so you're gonna have to charge squared on the bottom. And another one that's important is epsilon 0. So k equals 1 over 4 pi epsilon 0. Yes, that's correct. And then e sub 9 equals, I think it's 8.85 times 10 to the negative 12, whoops, 12. Yep, and then it's just the flip-flop of these units. Coulomb squared over Newtons times meter squared. So those are some important constants. Uh, what else did they cover? Oh, there's another one. So a lot of times, you'll be dealing with electrons and a proton. Sometimes they call the charge of those E, so this could be the charge of an electron or the charge of a proton. Of course, one is negative and one is positive, so if we say the magnitude of E, I think they usually consider E to be a positive value, but um, it's 1.6 times 10 to the negative 19 coulombs. And another one that will come in real handy, which I don't have this one written down, but the mass of an electron, so I'll say mass. Uh, is it mass? Yeah, I better not try that one, I don't, I don't have that memorized rule, I usually look it up every time. But the mass of an electron and the mass of a proton is also pretty, pretty useful. Um, we have, uh, so electric field is equal to force divided by charge. Yeah. Um. So let's start to talk a little bit about what an electric field is. Okay, so an electric field. So let's say that we have this charge here and this point here that, uh, just represents a point in space. So this, this point is nothing, um, it's just a, a point in space. This, this here is, is This, this here is, is actually a charge, so it has a charge value. Emanating from this charge, so this is a, a positive, uh let me do this next part over here. We'll redo the same thing, so if we have a positive electric charge emanating outward from that in a radial direction is an electric field. You can draw it this way. Or, I actually think for me visually, it's more helpful to draw it this way, so. And let's see, so if I try to draw the lines, the dis, the spacing of the lines to represent the the magnitude, um it's gonna, it's gonna follow inverse square, just like force does, so eventually, inside of this equation, there's a one over r squared. So the distance uh decreases the farther you move away, so it should be like let's say we're trying to go by values that represent um an increase of ten. So there would be our first one kinda close, our next one would be farther away. Our next one would be even farther away. And our next one would be even farther away. So yeah, I, as long as I didn't get that backwards in my head just now. So it's the same deal, the, the, it radiates outwards. And we can do the same with a negative charge. The circle part would look basically the same. The difference is the direction, the direction of the negative charge points inward toward the negative charge. And what that actually means, so what the direction means is uh, once again, let's compare this to gravity, so if we think of gravity, let's say this is the earth, right? Well, we'll say E for earth, and there's a gravitational field comparable to the electric field. The gravitational field also happens to follow the inverse square law, and the gravitational wheel, field points towards earth. And what that means is yeah, hold on. Alright, so if we have a mass out here somewhere, the ma, the mass is gonna feel a force in the direction of the electric field. Now the trouble with bringing that over into the, sorry, of the gravitational field, this gravitational field. The trouble with bringing that into the world of electricity is that we have both positive and negative charges. So the way it works is, um I use orange for positive, so let's say we have a positive charge. If we have a positive charge in a, in an electric field from, from a positive charge, then the positive charge force points in the direction of the electric field. If we have a positive charge in a negative thing here, ne, dealing with a negative charge, a charge, an electric field is created by a negative charge, positive charge points in the direction of the electric field. Now, when we deal with negative charges, let's get pink. The negative charge, if we put that in a positive electric field, the negative charge points in the opposite direction of the electric field. If we put a negative charge in an electric field generated by a negative charge, the negative charge that we just created points in direction opposite of the electric field. So basically, as you can see here, the positive charge always points in the same direction as the electric field, the negative charge always points in the opposite direction. Okay. There's the basics of electric fields. Um, now back to this formula, cuz I really didn't cover that, so so this on the right hand side does not represent a positive or a negative charge, it just represents a location in space. This charge here represents a uh a, a charge that we're considering. So in this formula, uh, this, this Q um, let's see how to say this right. So I guess you'd say, I think to use this formula as it is, which, to be honest, now I'm starting to doubt whether I'm correct or not, but let's label these Q one and Q two. I think I'll be able to figure out the correct thing to what I wanted to say. So let's go take a step back and deal with Coulomb's law, so we have, we have force equals k Q one, Q two over r squared. So r is the distance between these. Q one is this, and let's say for, for this moment here, that there's a Q two right here. So force uh is gonna be the force that's, these two generate on each other. Either the point away, either they're pointing away or towards, I didn't give, I didn't give Q two a positive or negative value, so we don't know yet which way, but it's not gonna matter, cuz you'll see here that one of them is gonna cancel, cuz the electric field which I'm gonna leave the vector signs off for the moment, we'll just assume everything's pointing in the same direction, so we can ignore them. So the electric field equals force divided by charge. Now, what we're gonna have then is k Q one, Q two over top of Q r squared. And the question that I'm trying to answer for myself right now is, is this Q, Q one or Q two? And I think it's so if we're able to use this for, I know we're able to use this formula when we only have one charge, which means that this Q on the bottom has to be Q one. Because if we don't have a Q two, so I think this has to be Q two, the one that you don't have. So we came up with either E equals F over Q one or k, Q one over r squared. And here, so in our first Coulomb's law, r is the distance between the two point charges. In the formula for ele, the uh strength of the electric field, r is the distance between the one charge that you have and the point in space that you're concerned with. So these are two formulas that you can use, if you already know the force that is being now this. Yeah, so if you already know the, so if, if I'm thinking, I didn't use this formula very often, that's why I'm struggling with how it's actually supposed to be set up. I believe you use this formula when let's say we're given the force that is enacted on charge two, then we can calculate the electric field at Q two. Or is it? Yeah, the strength of the electric field at Q two equals this force divided by Q one. Or, you know, we can, we can, you know, manipulate this to find any of the others, so if we wanted to find this force value here, but we knew the strength of the electric field at this point times the value for Q one, you know, we, we can do that, and so on. This other one is if you know, well, you always know K, cuz that's a constant, so if you know the distance between them. So let's say, in this one, you can find the strength of the electric field if you know the force at the point and the initial charge that's generating the electric field. The second one we can use if we know the distance between the two points but, between the char, initial charge and the point in space. And we, we also need, still need to know the value of uh this charge. So okay, so there's uh about electric fields. Um, well, there's the beginning stages of about electric fields. Let's go ahead and move on to some more about electric fields. Okay, so now we're gonna deal with uh multiple point charges again. So let's say that we have um, I'll keep the same picture, but I'll just add to it. So let's say Q one, so, and actually, this this is not Q two, this is just a point in space. I only considered it Q two when I set up Coulomb's law to help me figure out which Q I was supposed to be dealing with there, but yeah. Okay, so we're dealing with a point in space, it has a force created at that point, it has an electric field created at that point. So the force then, I guess technically, there's only a force if you throw something in here. Cause the force needs to act on something, but this is like, if you put something in here, what the, what the force would be. Maybe when you use this force one, you do actually need to have two charges, but I I'm a little bit confused on that, so that's something that I need to look up and make sure I understand better. So let's say we have different charges, right? So let's say here's charge one. Charge two. I'll make charge three negative, and that's enough, I could keep putting these all over and you'd get the idea. So here is force one. This is force two. And this is force three. And so, um in the same way that the forces all bad, all add as vectors, so do, does the strength of the electric field? So the electric field strength, so let's actually explain that with um just two charges. So let's say I have so ignore everything up at the top right now, I'm making a new setup, so we have charge one and there's a point. So charge one creates a force pointing in this direction. Now, let's say I take input charge two over here. Charge two creates a point, uh, creates a force in this direction. So what you can see here is that the force vectors can cancel. If, if, if the numbers are right, the distances and the charges cause the forces to be equal in magnitude but opposite in direction, then the forces cancel. Just like the forces can cancel, the magnitude of the electric field at this point can also cancel. Yes, so because electric fields, as I wrote the first time, have direction, they're vectors, just like forces are. Okay, so the forces can cancel, the electric field strength can also cancel. And so what we're gonna have here is we're gonna end up coming to the formula electric field equals k times the limit of delta Q of I as it approaches zero, so this is a, this is if you have a continuous charge, which I didn't do, but let's go let's say that we have this continuous uh linear charge with a constant linear charge density. And this point here, and we, I had the same setup before, but we were trying to find the force between, uh, this is a charge and this is a charge, but let's say that this isn't a charge now, this is just a point in space. This is a charge. And we wanna find the electric field strength at this point in space, so that's what I'm gonna be setting up right now. Some I, delta Q sub I over r sub I squared times the direction, the unit vector direction for r sub I. And then this sum is equal to k times integral of dQ over r squared times the direction of r, the unit vector direction of r. And you'll recognize this, because this is almost the exact same thing that I had uh when I, when I set up this scenario for a um to find the force. The only difference is there was an extra Q, because just like over here, there's an extra Q, um, but the difference between Coulomb's law for force and the formula for the electric field is that there's an extra Q in the one. Um, so it's the same here, th, this is exactly the same. And it's gonna end up being the same too, in the setup here where this is a semi circle, because R hat will just be considering the um extraction, if this is positive, we'll be considering the positive extraction, if it's negative, we'll be considering the negative extraction, and the simplification would work out exactly the same, except I think I probably had it a little wrong last time, so maybe you can't follow what I did last time, but it would be the same deal, you have to figure out uh how to, how to get the, the dQ, the uh unit vector of r, to get all that stuff, so that it, that it jives well. Um, and actually, this one I can do, I feel like I needed to do this on the last one, I didn't. So let's say that we're given Q as a total charge of this, so this is actually gonna simplify pretty easily. So K, let's say we're dealing with K times the integral of dQ over r squared, R hat. And uh, R hat should end up being this is where I'm a little confused, I feel like it just cancels out, but I don't think that's right. R hat it's gotta be cosine of theta, so what I was thinking is, so I know we can pull out the r squared, so we're gonna have k over r squared, cuz r is always the same, since this is a semi circle, times integral of dQ R hat. I think we can pull out the R hat, I think that's what I messed up last time, actually. So we have k which, this will be cosine theta, but then the issue is, we don't have a theta value for theta, cuz theta is a range. So that's why I'm really confused. I could've swore when I did it in the homework, I ended up just ignoring this for some reason, but I can't remember why now. Maybe I converted it to something else that I'm missing, and we probably don't use cosine of theta. So anyway, I'm pretty sure that this here, the integral of dQ, we, we'll be able to end up the integral of dQ is just gonna be adding up all of the little dQ values. When we add up all the dQ values, we end up getting Q, the total charge, so I know for sure this is gonna end up being k times Q over r squared, where Q here represents the total charge of this. And then I just have to figure out what to do with R, R hat, maybe you just take the integral from, no, cuz we already got rid of the integral. So anyway, whatever you do with R hat, I, for some reason, I can't remember right now, so but however you simplify it, it's gonna be simplified in the same way as the last one, um, I have to, I have to review that apparently. Alright, let's see. What's next here? Actually, you know, I have written down how to, how to simplify it, I think. No, I didn't write it down, I didn't write this one down, cuz I got it right when I did the homework. No, I didn't write it down. I didn't write this one down, because I got it right when I did the homework. I can't remember how to do it right now. Oh yeah, we'll just ignore it. Um, alright, so what's next? Uh, skip some of this stuff. Alright, so a couple of the examples I wrote down, and I think I'll just do one of them. So so let's say that we have the elec, an electric field due to, due to a charged rod. So our setup is going to be, so if this is the x y axis, and this is our charged rod, um, and then we want to find the value of the electric field at the origin here. Then let me start to add to this with probably yellow. So we're gonna have an electric field that points in this direction, because I didn't say yet, but let's make this a positive charge, positively charged rod. And uh, we'll, we'll label this point P. And so the distance between the P and the beginning of the rod, we'll call that A. Then the length of the rod, we'll call L. Then the, we're gonna create a dx. So for dx, I'll use red. So this is our, well, it's our dQ, um, and the length here of dQ is dx. And the value from P to dx is x. Yep. So to set this up and to solve this, we're gonna have, so we're gonna be using, the basic formula is the electric field equals k times Q over R squared. But we need to use dQ, so we'll have, uh, dE, so a tiny little piece of the electric field generated from this rod equals k times a tiny little piece of the charge times R squared. Except R squared here should be x, because it's this length here. So it should be x squared. KDQ over x squared. Then, uh, let's think, are we ready? We wanna get dQ in terms of x. So dQ equals, it should be, so let's say that we have the charge density of, let's say that we have either the total charge or the charge density of this rod. So total charge equals charge density times dx should be correct. So, um, yes, let's think for a second. So we have dx. Hmm, no, that should be length, not, not a d. Alright, so let's say that this is, should be total charge equals charge density times length. There we go. And now what we have is dQ equals charge density times dl, which in this case happens to be dx. That should be right. So let me double check. Yes. K lambda dx over x squared. Now, um, k and lambda are gonna be constants, and so from this top expression here, we see that lambda equals Q over L, and from this setup, I'm assuming that we're actually giving Q over L, not lambda, because I, I gave L here, so let's say that we were given Q. We have to be given either the total charge or the charge density, and assume that it's a uniform, uniformly distributed charge density. So, uh, let's say that we're given Q. So rewrite this one more time. We're gonna have k Q dx over L and x squared. Now, what we can do, uh, let's do it below. Just kinda rewrite it, actually. dE equals, um, I'm gonna split them up, so k Q over L uh, 1 over x squared dx. The reason I split it up like that is, so now what we're actually looking for is E, which is a value for the electric field. So we say the integral, and we take the integral of this side. Oops. But the reason I split it up is because we can actually pull out, so k is a constant, it doesn't change. Uh, wherever we move dx to, k is always the same. Q is the total charge of the rod. Wherever we move dx to, Q is always the same. Length is the total length of the rod. Wherever we move dx to, the length is always the same. None of those change. X is the distance from P to dx. So when we move dx, x does change. So we can actually put our integral sign here, pull those out. So now we just have, um, I wanna rewrite this too, because it'll help me do the integration better. So 1 over x to the negative 2 is the same as, sorry, 1 over x squared is the same as x to the negative 2. Um, so what we're gonna have is, uh, negative 1 over x, because we add 1, we get negative 1, and then we bring that out in front. No, and, yeah, well, yeah, and then we divide by it. Yeah, I haven't been doing a lot of integrals lately, so we're gonna get k Q over top of L times this evaluated from, which I should've set that up earlier. I never set out the from. So we're going from um, this position here on the x-axis, which is what we were dealing with, is going to be A to A plus L. Let me do this real quick check. Yeah, I think, pretty sure that's right. So this equals, um, k times Q over L times negative 1 over A plus L, uh, minus a negative 1 over A. Now, if we multiply top and bottom by the one that we don't have, so that we can add these together, we're gonna get this equals k Q over L times negative A plus A plus L over top of A times A plus L. The A and the negative A cancel. When we multiply this inside this L, and this L will cancel. So we're gonna end up with k times Q over A times A plus L. Uh, yes, I did it correct. This is the final answer for the value of the electric field, which, sorry, I started to tip it sideways, but, so now we have the, the, uh, the, this, now you can just plug in numbers. So we, we used calculus, we used the basic formula, um, but the basic formula can't be used directly here, so we applied calculus to the basic formula to end up with a new formula that we can apply to this specific situation. Um, if you took a non-calculus-based course, they would probably just have you memorize this formula without showing you how to derive the formula. Well, what's next? Um, there's several other type examples like this that are very good to practice, because, uh, solving the integrals is not easy, setting them up is not easy, and I did really well in my calculus classes, so, um, and I, I still find them hard, so I think, I don't know, it's just, they use kind of a different mindset in physics. So anyway, it's really good to practice those. Um, I guess derivations would be, I, I wanna use the word derivations, because it's like you have these, these basic, uh, physics formulas, and then you apply calculus to it to derive a more, uh, more specific case physics formula. So if you were taking non-calculus-based physics, um, I'm assuming they would just have you skip the derivation part and memorize the formula that applies to the specific situation. But if you're taking the calculus base, um, to be honest, so far in my experience, I don't know, I've, I've taken physics courses at two universities now, and they've both been the same, where, um, it's actually easier on the tests, and you're much more likely to get a good grade if you skip the derivation process and just go straight to the formula at the end, or have a vague idea of the general, the derivation process, so that you can do some slight tweaking to the formula at the end. But in my opinion, it's better to do the full derivation, to at least have, have an understanding. Um, at least in most cases, they, they give a lot of different types of cases, so maybe you don't need to do all of them, but, but at least I think having a, having a good understanding for at least several of the different scenarios, um, and how to set them up and how to derive the, the more specific equation is very, very useful. To me, it's the reason why, why taking calculus-based physics is a thing, and I assume it'll be used in the higher level classes in physics, but you know, I haven't, haven't got there yet. Yeah, so let's see, what's next? Um, so let's deal with electric flux. So electric flux, um, I took the full calculus sequence before starting physics, and I'm really glad I did, to be honest, because uh, university physics 1 and university physics 2 start out the gate using the full gamut of, uh, calculus, so I, with, on the downside, as you can see, I, I sort of forgot how to do a basic integral, because I haven't been doing them for a long time. Um, we did do them in the, in the upper level classes, it's just not, you don't do them as much as you do like if I was taking calc 2, and so, uh, yeah, like, I guess for having the basics fresh in your head, it can be, can be nice to do them, uh, in the normal sequence. Um, but to be honest, for me, my classes have been spaced out over a longer period of time, because I work full-time. So that's really more the reason for forgetting how to do some of the simpler stuff like that, but I think it's very beneficial to do, to do calc 1, 2, 3, and 4, if it's called calc 4, um, otherwise. So calc 1 and 2 are pretty standardly called calc 1 and 2, but if they weren't, the, the basic, the calculus sequence goes, um, derivative calculus. So that's called calc 1. Uh, then you have integral calculus, that's called calc 2. And these are pretty standardly always called calc 1 and calc 2, at least in the US. Then you have calc 3, which can also be called, um, usually it's probably gonna be called either, uh, I wanna say multi-variable calculus, I've seen it called that. Um, I think that's usually what it's called, multi-variable calculus. Then sometimes the, another class could be called differential equations, which is what it was called where I was at before. Or sometimes it's called, um, yeah, so sometimes it's called calc 4, or sometimes it's called differential equations. So if you have all four of these, um, usually you have to take these first two before taking physics 1 and physics 2. But honestly, multi-variable calculus deals with vectors, and vectors, as you can see, are used all over the place, and they're also used quite a bit in, uh, calc 1. So the idea of a cross product, which I think I'm gonna get to, um, cross product comes up, comes up later, it comes up in like torque and stuff. So let's say you have two vectors, and I'll just make up, we'll call it vector A and vector B. So you might have the dot product, or if you have, if they're vectors and you have to multiply them, you might have the dot product, or you might have the cross product. And it's really helpful, and I've been using all the time, actually, that the dot product of A and B is, um, A times B times cosine theta. If you wanna be a little more mathematically precise, it's the magnitude of A, because A is a vector, times the magnitude of B, times cosine of theta. Cross product doesn't come up as often, so I'm not gonna worry about that right now. But these kinds of things are covered in multi-variable calculus, which is calc 3. Differential equations, um, those also come up, but actually that hasn't, uh, those don't really come up so much in physics 1 and 2, although I know they come up in the more advanced physics classes quite a bit, so, um, and I'm not, there's really no need to talk about that right now. Anyway, so yeah, there's my little plug for calc. The more that I think about it, I think, um, physics could be a called, uh, applied calculus. So alright, so anyway, the reason that I went over that is another concept that's covered in calc 3, and is used in physics with no real explanation of what it means. Um, but it's going over in some depth in, uh, calc 3 is the concept of flux. So flux says, if you have a surface, so this is a surface, and what I want visually here, let's say this is the y-axis, this is the x-axis, and this is the, the z-axis, right? So it's like kinda, kinda at an angle, like kinda pointing at us. And let's say that we have these, these, uh, vector lines, I think flux lines is what you'd say, pointing in this direction. Maybe these ones curve a little bit. So the measure of flux, let's say we also have these ones out here. The measure of flux is telling you, um, more or less how many of these flux lines are traveling through this surface. So when it comes to electric flux, which is what we're gonna use Gauss's law to try to calculate for, um, and this one. So I believe if I remember right, for some reason, the actual electric flux represents in the physical reality, I seem to be forgetting, this is more of the mathematical explanation. I believe electric flux is, it probably has to do with the electric field, actually. Yeah, I can tell from the formula that it does. So the electric field, so, alright, so let's say we have this charge. And let's say that we have this surface that this charge is enclosed in. So um, I want that to be inside, just use your imagination. Maybe, maybe I'll move it over a little bit. Say that it's not right there. That's good enough. Okay, let's, oops, it's the wrong color. This one. Let's say that it's actually over here. Oh, it's in the center, right? So this, uh, charge radially outward from this charge emanate these field lines. field lines. Okay? And what flux is, is the amount of field lines that go through each surface of this cube. Um, but I think they have to be at right angles. Yeah, so so long as my, so long as, uh, I'm correct here, which I think I am, um. So if, like, let's say right now, just from the lines I drew, there's, there's many more lines than what I drew, but just from the lines I drew right now through the top surface, this is the only line that is uh, perpendicular to the top surface. And this, so this line doesn't count, even though it's going through it, it's not gonna be added in as part of the flux, because it's not perpendicular to the surface. Same is true over here, we're just looking at this line, down here, just this line, just this line, and then, and so on, on the other surfaces. So, um, so the way I just described it, I used the word perpendicular, you can also use the word parallel, because what happens i- in the formula is flux equals the basic way to memorize it is E times A. But the more mathematical way, which actually they didn't write in the book, but it would be better to write this as E as a vector dot A as a vector. Well, the thing that's tricky about that is A is not a vector, like if you, if you so the way, what you probably think A stands for is not a vector, right, because you might think that A stands for area. So you might think that A stands for the total surface area, which is sort of correct. Or you might think that A stands for the area of the face that you're dealing with, so in this case, let's just say we're looking at this face right here. Then, um, but A does not actually stand for this area. What A stands for is a bit of an unusual concept, and I don't think this was explained in, in my physics class. But I remember it from a math class, A actually stands for a vector that points perpendicular to the area. And, um, technically, it could point inward or outward, but by convention, you always think of it as pointing outward unless otherwise specified. Maybe if it's, if it specifies that it points inward, you think of it as inward, but if it doesn't, you assume that it points outward. And then the magnitude of the vector is determined by the area of the surface. So whatever the area of this surface is, that's gonna be the magnitude. The direction is perpendicular to the surface. Well, since the direction is perpendicular to the surface, then that means what you're actually dealing with is A should be parallel to E. Does that make sense? So this is the, uh, the expression then, so flux is equal to E dot A. Now due to the crazy magic of, uh, multivariable calculus, um. If you want to take these values, so this is dot product, which I just went over a second ago. So this is also the same as E, where E here is actually the magnitude of the vector, but you often leave off the magnitude signs, because technically, if it doesn't have the vector over it, but it is a vector and you write it without the vector sign, then it's considered the magnitude of the vector. So the magnitude of the electric field times the magnitude of the area vector, the magnitude of the area vector is just the area. So this is what you would normally think of as area. So it's the magnitude of the electric field times the area of the surface times cosine of theta. And cosine of theta, theta here will be the angle between, between between these two vectors. Um, so actually, you know what? I think what I said in earlier was a little bit untrue. Because, so he, so I think what I said earlier was actually a little bit untrue, because this vector is counted, just not all of it is counted. So like, for this vector, um, all of the area counts, because the angle here is going to be, uh, zero, and cosine of zero is one. Um, the angle here is, uh, uh, greater than zero. So the cosine of theta will be less than one, so it's gonna be a certain fraction of E times A. So this will only get the portion of the vector that points in this direction, and will ignore the portion of the vector that points in this direction. Yeah, sorry, that's the actual correct explanation of flux, which I solved from the math. So. Um. So then the next concept that's pretty important, that's, um, was, so they use the notation, but it was never even explained, uh, in my physics textbook. And actually, they didn't use the same notation, but I like the notation from my math class better, so. Another way that, to write this out, uh, in certain circumstances, instead of just so these all represent the same thing, but which one, how you apply it depends on the exact setup. So you could also use flux equals the surface integral, ooh, fancy fancy, of E dot DA. And surface integrals, if you solve them, the, the mathematic, like in a math class, they're actually really, really hard to solve, I, I found them to be really difficult. And, um, you have to do, just like I was doing in, in the physics problem earlier, where I kept like changing, like, okay, so now I have D, uh, DQ, let me change it to something with a DL, now let me change it to something with a DX. You have to do that when you do surface integrals in a math class. Um, but actually, when you do surface integrals in, uh, at, at least so far, what we've been doing in, in this physics class, um, generally, they're used when you're dealing with a Gaussian surface, and you really only use this longer version like this when you can set up a Gaussian surface, which is an imaginary surface around your charge that will, um, allow this to simplify very nicely, so that you don't actually end up really solving the surface integral, you just do, do some, some magic substituting, basically. You, you only use it when you can substitute out the complicated bits. Um, and then the full, fuller version of Gauss's formula, so we're talking about the flux. And this, this is all formula for flux, this is formula for flux, but Gauss's formula involves something else, it says that the flux, which equals this, also equals QN over epsilon zero. Now, the reason that that's useful is because it's often very easy, or at least you're often given in problems, the charge inside the surface. So let's say this is my Gaussian surface that I set up. Um, actually, so let's get rid of all this, and let me start anew, because this would often be used in a little bit of a different scenario than the setup that I gave a minute ago. Okay, so let's start over, let's say that we have this, uh. I think you'd want to pick like an ugly shaped charge, so let's say that we have like this really ugly shaped charge. So in the examples that I gave a minute ago, when I was trying to find the electric field, but I had like a kind of a um, a charge that, a charge setup that had a lot of symmetry, so such as a, a charged rod or a charged, um, like, uh, rod in the shape of a semicircle. Um, or charge, I skipped them actually, but also you, you'd do a charged ring. Oopsie. That's a ring. Or just a charged disc, so this is hollow inside. Or a charged disc where this is like a plate, where the whole thing is charged. So any of, any of these type situations, you can use the formula and the setup that I went over before. You just have to apply the calculus to figure out how to, how to get everything to, to simplify out, you know, to get the solution. But if we have this really ugly shape, it's gonna be very hard, maybe even impossible, to apply calculus to this ugly shape. Because you, you're gonna be like, okay, well, I want this to be like my DQ, but then my range of charge goes, goes where? It goes all over the place. So you can't do a whole lot with that. So instead, what's often done is, let's say we know the total charge of this ugly blob. Um, you could also do it in a situation, and actually, this is how it's given in class. For now that I remember from examples, let's say you have these different point charges. So like, here's a charge, here's a charge, here's a charge, here's a charge, here's a charge. You could do summing up all these charges, or you could create a Gaussian surface around them. Um, which I'm gonna do to this ugly blob that I made. I don't know whether this is physically possible, but I suppose it would be physically possible, yeah, I don't see why not, it'd be physically possible to have some weird shape like this. So let's say that around, so we have this charge, let's say we want to find the electric field. What we can do is, we can draw a Gaussian surface around this charge. And the Gaussian surface has to have certain properties, which I have written down, because I didn't memorize all of them. I'm pretty sure that I satisfy the qualities right here, assuming that this is a sphere, which this doesn't look much like a sphere, but pretend my picture is a sphere. Then, um, the Gaussian surface must satisfy at least one of the following. So one, the value of the electric field can be argued by symmetry to be constant over the portion of the surface. Um, which that's not true here, the way I drew this. The dot product in the equation can be expressed as a simple algebraic product, meaning that the uh, the, so what that means is, as long as E and A always point in the same direction, remember the A is, A is by definition a vector that is perpendicular to the surface already, so as long as E and A are both always perpendicular to the surface, eh, meaning parallel to one another, then, uh, you can use this, and in this case I don't know if that's true here either, actually, maybe I'll have to draw a circle inside. Um. I think that is true, I'm a little confused actually in this setup, whether that's true or not. The dot product in the equation is zero, that's not gonna be true. Um, the electric field is zero over the portion of the surface, that's also not true, so I'm not actually sure if I can use this, uh, setup, so let's do this other one, although to be honest, I'm not sure why you'd rather use this other one, but let's just do it. So let's say that this is a sphere with a total charge. This is a sphere. This is a Gaussian surface. So now, assuming these are both spheres, and that this sphere is in the center of the Gaussian surface, which it doesn't look like it, but let's say that all that's true, then I know for sure that that one condition is satisfied, where um, E and A are, uh, always pointing in the same direction, so we can drop the, the, uh, vector notation. So let's say we're trying to solve for the electric field, let's say we know the rest of this information. So we would say, uh, well, we just rewrite this actually, the electric flux equals the surface integral of the electric field dot DA, which equals charge in divided by epsilon zero, let's say that we know charge in, let's say it's Q. And let's say that we know, you're, you, in this setup, you'd often be given R. So let's say that from the center of this blob of charge to the surface here, that this is R. So now, what we can do is, um, where we have the surface integral of E times A, no, times DA equals QN is Q, and epsilon zero is a constant. Now, in this situation here, we can pull out the E, and the reason we can pull out the E is because E is always, uh, the same value anywhere on the surface. Um, because it's, uh, so like at this point here, R is the same, so E is the same. R is the same and Q is the same, because the formula for E, E equals KQ over R squared. K never changes, so if Q and R don't change, then E is the same. So at this point, Q and R are the same, at this point, Q and R are the same. This point, Q and R are the same, and that's the same every, at every point. So E does not change as we integrate over this surface. Okay? And, uh, so we can pull E to the outside, so E times the surface integral of DA equals Q over epsilon zero. And then, uh, what you learn in, uh, multivariable calculus is that the surface integral uh, here, over I guess to say over DA, is going to just return the surface area. So this value is the same as surface area. So E times, we'll say, area, surface. I'll just say sur, so this is surface area. Normally, when I do it in my own stuff, I just say SA, so I'll do that, E times SA, where SA is one, one thing. That's how I like to write it. Equals Q divided by epsilon zero. Now, what we're actually trying to solve for is, in this setup, I wanted us to solve for the electric field. Of course, this could have been set up exactly the same, and we, maybe we could be solving for the charge instead, but let, um, you really couldn't be solving for this. I guess you could also be solving for the radius, but I haven't seen that yet, but that's also possible, but let's say that we're trying to solving for the electric field as I set it up. So this is gonna turn into the electric field equals charge divided by the surface area times epsilon zero. Now, for surface area, um, honestly, you could just use, use calculus to find the surface area, but it's a little easier just to memorize, or to look up, maybe I don't have it memorized. I don't want it, I don't feel like using the calculus right now to find it, so I think the surface area of a circle is four pi R squared, let me double check that. Oops. Oh, where's my mouse? Uh, yeah, four pi R squared. So. Lost my mouse again. Okay, so four pi R squared, so we have Q. So the electric field equals Q over four pi R squared, and now, we had earlier that K equals one over four pi epsilon zero, that means epsilon zero equals, multiply this side by epsilon zero, then divide by K. Epsilon zero equals one over four pi K. And in this case, we have it on the bottom, so we really want one over epsilon zero, so one over epsilon zero equals four pi K. Oops, K. So, um, on the top here, we have four pi K. Which the reason for this is because this comes up often, so now we can cancel out the four pis. So we have our electric field is equal to Q times K over top of R squared. And now this is the equation solution that you can just plug in numbers and find your value. Because, um, in the setup, we were given the charge. We were given, K is always known, and we were given the value of R. So. So that's, uh, that's Gauss's law, that's a flux integral, that's, uh, electric flux, and that's how it's often used. Um. Yeah, let's see what's next. I'm actually, I'm about halfway through, and, uh, I think that's probably enough, this video has already got really long. So that's, that's half of the content that will be on this midterm exam. I hope, I hope you enjoyed.